Everyone.
All right, we're recording. I'm sure you already know.
Great, and since it is six o'clock and we have quorum, I am going to get us started with a, unless, is there anyone else you're waiting for, Joe, on your end?
Nolan should be here shortly, but.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Welcome, Charlotte, welcome, Joel. So I will open with a call to order and a roll call, starting with Christina.
Henri here.
Constantine here.
Curtis isn't with us yet.
Green here.
Malloy here.
Miller here.
And Bowen here. So I would like to call this meeting to order that is taking place virtually pursuant to Governor Haley's most recent law signed on March 28th, 2025, allowing these temporary provisions for the open meeting law. The meeting will be available as video on demand 24 hours after this on our YouTube channel and on WillieNet. It does not appear we are streaming live at the moment. I did not arrange for anyone to read the mission in advance. Would anyone like to read the mission? I will read the mission. I haven't read the mission yet. I think I've asked others to read it every time. At our mission, at Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Charlotte, we are going to turn it over to you for the student update now.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I remember sophomore and junior year. It's fun to end up my senior year back talking to the committee. Right now outside of Mount Greylock, we have a huge track meet going on, and I believe as either tonight or tomorrow's the girls softball senior night.
That was tonight.
Tonight? Look at that. I hope to stay around and stick around for it. Hopefully the rain stays off. And yeah, there's been a lot going on around on the school. There's a student-directed and run and performed performance that'll be Friday and Saturday and Sunday. You can come to the door and you can buy your ticket there and students can come free. And we have had a lot of elections of Student Government Day where we're sending a student to the cap- to our state Capitol and working with students from across the state on policy and learning more about our government working. And we also have had in the midst of being in APs and MCAS testing. A lot of our students are between taking like one to four APs. I know a lot of my classes have been scattered and it's been a lot of work week and a lot of studying. So I'm sure a lot of students are going to be happy in another week or two when it lightens up the load. For Student Council, we've worked on bringing in our new Student Council members. We had elections right after April break, and so we have five new eighth graders who will be filling up for next year. One of our big initiatives right now is the Teacher Appreciation Day. We know what happened on Tuesday and we were bummed we couldn't get it all together, but we'll be sending out a lot of our gratitude and appreciation to the teachers shortly. And we've had, we have had a successful vending machine. I don't know if Sabine and Sarah have talked to you about, but a lot of students are rejoiced with getting an extra snack before practice or something of such. I think that's all I have right now. Sports have been, of course, full swing and it's, it's hard with the weather and all the rain, but it's nice to see how green it is outside and how we're in spring. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Does anyone have any questions for Charlotte? Thank you for bringing the student voice and the student energy to us.
Have a lovely night, sorry.
You too, you too. Moving to public comment, which I think we might be without public for public comment. Welcome, Curtis. So having no public comment, let's move to approval of the minutes. Is there somebody who can move to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Curtis. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Carrie.
No, Ursula can do it.
Thank you, Ursula. Discussion. I have two very small edits to offer. One is, I think I saw at the top of the minutes, it doesn't say when the meeting adjourned, so that just filling in that spot. And then in the section on governance and policies, it says there were four informational items that would be brought back for adoption, but they were informational at the last meeting, so I think they're being brought back for discussion. So just a simple word change. Any other comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Christina kick us off?
Henri, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin, by an aye.
Green, aye. Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye.
Bowen, aye. Excellent, thank you. And welcome, Nolan. You are right on time. We are up to you for the principal's report.
I'm here, sorry. I just came in from the track meet. Brian Gill asked me to start months ago and I said yes, and then he moved it to today, last minute. So apologies for being late. I'm going to do a quick update about where we're at in the school year, and then I am going to talk about the Cape trip. So first, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to say gratitude to all the teachers, I mean, at Lanesboro, the paraprofessionals, cafeteria staff, stool staff at Lanesboro. Our PTO has done a great job supporting us this week. And yesterday I was out there with a coffee cart making sure all the teachers were taken care of, but I just wanted to give a special shout out to all of the educators and adults at Lanesboro who support our kids every day. Secondly, we are exactly halfway through our MCAS season. Our students are working extremely hard. We just finished the third grade maths. We have fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math, as well as fifth grade science and so science and engineering. Props to our students on the first ELA section. Some of our students worked the entire school day to finish their essays. I couldn't be more proud of the work that they did. Last week, we, the student support team met and we reviewed our attendance data for the year, and as of last Friday, we had 500 less daily absences than the previous year at the same time. So we've been working hard on making sure our students feel welcomed, and with that, it's paying off, and I can't be more proud of the work and our students and our families for prioritizing education and getting the kids in school. Next part is we have some end of the year stuff coming up. Our crossover ceremony for grade six is on the 18th, and then our summer fest is on June 13th. Feel free to come out and support our PTO and our sixth graders on those days. And then before I dive into the Cape Cod trip, I want to give a special shout out to two people who have been at Lanesboro a long time. We have two retirements this year. I don't know if I'll see you all before the end of the year. Kathy Larson has been working at Lanesboro Elementary School longer than most, you know, most of the parents of the school have been alive, not just me. I think 32 to 37 years is the quote, based on what she was doing in the school. She has been a factory of institutional knowledge. She was the person when I started at Lanesboro, the person who I went to every, every time. I had a question about, hey, tell me about Lanesboro in the past. She always answered it. And then secondly, Beth Nichols is also retiring at the end of this year. She's been a reading specialist for over 20 years at Lanesboro. She's been with the students who needed support in reading, coming up with creative, and, you know, she's, she's the type of person who would never say die when a student was making growth. She would try something else, try something else, try something else. She, she wanted every single student in her care to grow, and that shows. So we're going to miss both Kathy and Beth next year, and we have, you know, it's going to be a change, and I'm excited for new things, but it's going to be sad to lose them. So next is the Cape presentation. Sorry, let me just pull it up. See if I can share my screen. So I cannot see you, but can someone just give me a clap or a thumb to say that they can see the screen that I'm sharing?
They can see it. Thanks.
Wonderful.
Perfect. Thank you. So Cape Cod this year is a week earlier than usual. It is May 20th to May 23rd. The students depart at 6:30 on Tuesday. The coach bus goes to the Cape. They stay at Burgess Camp in Sanwich. Thirty-four students plus four Hancock students and nine chaperones are attending this trip. This year, there is only one Hancock coming from Hank, going from Hancock, coming from Hancock, and that is because all four students are female, and so they're sending one female chaperone to be in that bunk. So the entire trip cost approximately $30,000. For each student, it would have been $759, but with fundraising, we wrote down to $329 per student. And with that, we do have so many businesses that reach out that want to sponsor our trip. So any student that can afford it, it can be paid for by a local business sponsor, which I think is, and it's mostly by students or businesses who had them, that they themselves went on the trip. So Tuesday, a little quick dive into the agenda. They go to Mystic Aquarium. They have more activities than they did last year. They're going to do a squid dissection, I believe, in the lab. They get their bunk assignments. They do some team building. Then every night they write in their journals. Wednesday is a busy day. They go to the wildlife pasture, and this is where I believe last year, they, maybe two years ago, they found the second-largest horseshoe crab documented on that beach. And then they go to a nature walk. They do team building activities. And then in the afternoon, they go on a whale, they go, they don't go to a whale watch. A whale watch person presents to them, and then they journal, and it slides out. Thursday is the whale watch, and that's maybe the most exciting part of the day. Seeing those whales up close is amazing. Then they go to Race Point Beach and do some geology. Then they have their journaling and it slides up, and they have to pack because they leave on Friday. Friday, they go to the National History Museum of Harvard, and then they finish up and they're on their way home. So this year for fundraising, they did, they sold candy bars. They did corporate sponsors. They did a dime to donate. They sold flower bulbs, penny wars, dance, they did two danceathons, one for little, one's through K through three, one's for four, five, and six. They did a basketball student staff game, and then they did a parent-led raffle, and they're always looking for new ways to fundraise.
Hey, Nolan, wasn't there also a music bingo?
There, I don't know if it was this year. I know last year.
It was at Berkshire Hills. I went.
Yes, and it was a terrible, you went? It was like really cruddy that night, wasn't it?
It was, but the event was great.
Well, I appreciate you going. And that is all I have. I know it was a blast. I came in real quick from the track meet, and maybe I'll go back out and help Brian after this. So what questions do you have for me?
I just have a question, Nolan, about reporting out from it. Do you typically report back to us in like the next month, or is it in the fall? I don't remember how we get to hear about how everything went and all that.
Well, I think if something bad happened, you'd hear about it much sooner. But I don't, I don't think in the past I've ever reported out. I'm more than willing to. It'd be really cool to have, it'd be really cool to have students report out. I think having, it would be seventh grade students at the time. I think that would be a more impactful type of interaction. But we can definitely, we have some, we will have some, we have some great presenters in our sixth grade, so that'd be something we can look forward to in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nolan?
Just wishing them all a great adventure.
I'm still screen sharing, aren't I? I'm sorry.
If there are no other questions, then Nolan, thank you for the report. Thank you for the, giving us the update on the trip, and certainly thank you for volunteering at the track meet, and you can go back.
Have a great evening, everyone.
All right, you too. With that, Joel, turn, oh, go ahead.
Well, one thing we should vote to approve, have the school committee vote to approve.
Right, right.
Just vote to approve that motion to approve the Cape Cod field trip for Lanesboro Elementary School sixth graders as presented. That's all.
Okay, excellent. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
You, Curtis, thank you.
I will second.
Thank you for the second. Christina, any other discussion? Jose?
Thank you, Julia. This question stems from the Policy and Governance Subcommittee, having had the chance or the opportunity to review our existing policies on support of, of field trips and the like. Part of our existing policy guarantees that all of our students have an opportunity to participate in these types of trips. And I was just curious, in this case, I should have asked the question while, while I had the chance, but Joe, I don't know if you could, you could respond to cases in which families who, who may not be able to afford the fee that we're asking them to pay for their, you know, for their child to participate in this trip. What's, how are we, how are we handling those cases?
Nolan did provide specific numbers within his presentation, but they had, without fundraising, trip cost per student was 700 and something dollars. With the fundraising that they did, two things happened, and this has happened annually, I think, for many years. First off, the per student cost went down to $329, I think, per person. And for all students that had previously been identified as, as really benefiting from significant financial assistance, or who requested it during a part of the process, all of them, those, those costs are completely waived. So all of that fundraising, so it's really thanks to the Lanesboro Elementary School community, businesses in the community, and all the fundraising efforts that the class and the teachers and the community undertake to, to make that possible. That's an annual thing, and to me, it is the strongest example of, of that positive work to make sure that the field trip is accessible to all, that we have within the district, and it's a great model. With the year-long buildup, all the fundraising that happens, it is, it is deep, it is broad, and it touches many parts of the community. So it's a, it's a real strength.
No, I appreciate that, Joe, and, and apologies for asking to clarify once more to ensure that we are in compliance with our existing policies. Every child in the Lanesboro Elementary School in sixth grade will be attending this trip.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Curtis and Christina. Do we have any other questions or discussion? If not, Christina, why don't you lead us off with a roll call vote?
Henri, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Elfin, by an aye.
Green, aye. Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye, and concession stand is open.
Bowen, aye. All right, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Now, if we can move to the director's report, apologies for jumping that gun. Hand it over to you, Joe. Sorry, hand it over to Noel.
This actually goes straight to Noel. So thank you, Noel.
All right, thank you, and thank you for having me. I'm excited to talk about things going on in our Special Education Department. It's been a great year. It's a busy, busy time here for everybody. So we got a lot of people working really hard to make sure our students are very successful. So that's been great. I want to shout out to everyone in the school for really putting, putting forth their best every single day, and for our students, because it's nice out, and this, everyone wants to enjoy the nice weather, and so, so kudos to everyone on that. This year, I think we had spoken, I had spoken to you earlier, we, the state launched a new IEP. So in September, we started using the new IEP form. The old one had been 20 something years old. So it was a big shift for everyone. We have had a lot of professional development from various places. So I felt, I think that everyone was really well-prepared for the shift. And the form is really user-friendly, and one of the really nice things is it brings the student's voice into the IEP much more strongly than it was before. So we have been able to interview students from pre-K through 22, and kind of gotten a sense of where they feel like their strengths are, where they're having concerns or things that they want to work on, what their goals are for school and for postgraduate. And so we've been able to bring that into the IEP to make sure that what we're working on aligns with what they want to be working on. So that's been really exciting, and we've had students coming to meetings a lot more frequently as well, and that's been great, too. So thanks to the new form for kind of naturally bringing that process along. So that is the one thing that happened this year. Another really exciting thing, I keep seeing everyone up at the track meet. We've continued with the Unified Sports Program, so if you haven't had a chance to get to a Unified Basketball game or Unified Track Meet, please find time to do that next year. It is just such a wonderful environment. Our track team is going to sectionals this week and going to states next week. So that's really exciting, and thanks to our athletes and their families, the fans, and to the coaches, and lots of volunteers and fans. It's really been a wonderful, wonderful program. So that's been exciting to see. We've also had cooperative classes going on at the high school, and so those are regular education classes where we have students with special needs working alongside students, general education students. We have a cooperative art class, a cooperative music class, and a cooperative cooking class. So that's been wonderful as well. Students who may not have cross paths in a class before are now forging friendships, and, you know, that's been a really, it's been going on for a few years, but it keeps growing. Some of the classes are hard to even get into at this point. They're filling up, so that's been really fun to see as well. We just received our Special Education Determination Report, which is something that comes annually from the state, and I'm happy to report that we have met requirements with an 88%. We got 36 out of 41 points, which is great. So we don't have any required specific targeted technical assistance or anything like that that we need to work on this year. So that's wonderful. And that looks at a couple, there's a matrix. It looks at several different things, but it looks at the exiting results of our students that have IEPs. It looks at our inclusion percentages. It looks at MCAS scores for fourth grade, eighth grade, and high school students. Looks at some of the outcomes for our preschoolers and outcomes for our students that graduate, if they are going on for more school, or are they competitively employed or in some other sort of employment. And then some of the compliance things that also looks at are their discrepancies by race and ethnicity. Are we over-identifying students with needs inappropriately, or our discipline policies and not taking those sorts of things into account. So we had no non-compliance findings last year either, so all of that played into that matrix. So we're in good shape there. So that's great. Next thing is our summer program. We have been planning our summer program for a while now. Chris Hocken will be our coordinator. Her and I have been working together to make sure that we have programs to meet the needs of all of our students that require services over the summer. So we have the elementary school program, and that will be happening at Lanesboro Elementary this summer. Last year it was at West, so we're rotating this year. That will be for our pre-K through five students. We have 48 students or so currently signed up to attend to that program. We are fully staffed. We're very excited about that, and that will be four days a week, three hours a day for four weeks. So that will be in the month of July. So they'll be doing some academics, some social things, and, and also working in some fun, too. So that'll be great. We have our program up at Mount Greylock, and that is, we have two separate programs. So we have a sixth grade, we have a program for sixth graders, rising seventh graders. So last summer, we moved that age group up here, so they have time to get in the school and get a sense of building and practice opening the lockers and find out where the nurse is and all those fun things. So it worked out really well last year, having those students get a head, heads up on the school ahead of time. So we're going to do that again. We have six students that'll be attending that program. And then we have an academic skills program for our older students, and we have 11 students in that program as well. And then we also will be sending a handful of students to Camp Russell for recreational programming. That's a program, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that program, but it's a very fun, outdoor, exciting program. The kids get to do all kinds of boating and swimming and, you know, crafting and all that good stuff. So that program will work on their recreational skills and their social skills. So that is what our summer program will be looking like this summer. Okay, and for next year, a couple of things we're really excited about. We are, with the district's focus on literacy, we are very excited to also put a strong focus on literacy for our department. So we have, we have 10 special educators signed up to complete the Orton-Gillingham training. So those educators range from pre-K through eighth grade, 10 of our special education teachers. We will be starting that in the fall. It's a two-year program. So there's some heavy classroom time, and then there's a 100-hour practicum. But when they complete that, they will be associate-level trained Orton-Gillingham teachers, and Orton Gillingham is a structured, multi-sensory approach to literacy. It's very well researched. It's really the, the top-notch reading instructions for our students. So we're really excited to be able to have our, our special education teachers be able to work alongside our reading specialists and kind of have everyone bombarding these kiddos with really high-quality teaching, and we're hoping to see really great results from that. So that is very exciting for us. And in addition to that, we also have the reading specialist that we added to the middle school, which is really important. So we'll have a full-time reading specialist there next year, and she will be working to provide some direct instruction to some of our kiddos that need either individual or very small group teaching. She'll also be probably pushing into an English class, so she can provide some inclusion support for students within their general ed English class. And then she may be working with some regular education students and some of our English Language Learner students as needed as well. So we're really excited to have that. So thank you to everyone for supporting that. So I think we have a lot of really exciting stuff going on in literacy for next year as well. So that is a brief wrap-up of some of the things we have going on. Does anyone have any questions or anything I can answer? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Noel, and you had me at meets requirements.
Pretty happy to see that come through.
That's fantastic. Yes, all, great work, all of it. Carrie, did you have a question?
I do, but Jose also seemed to have a question.
I'll be, I was just going to second Julia there, Noel. Just, just express, express some gratitude for all the work that you and your team are up to. Thanks.
Thank you.
So my only question is about the ability for our district to retain special education staff. Have we had any issues with, because I know it's a statewide issue, maybe a national issue. So I'm just curious if we, how successful we've been.
We are fully staffed. We have been fully staffed since I took the position. I'm not saying that has anything to do with me. I'm just saying I haven't had to deal with staffing issues myself. We did have one staff member who did resign, but we are set for the fall. So yeah, and all of our related providers, I know statewide and nationally, it's very hard for people to keep psychologists and OTs and PTs and speech, but we, knock on wood, have, have been fully staffed, and our, most of our staff have been here a very long time. So.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I can hand it over to you, Joe, right, for the super. Now, I can hand it over to you, Joe, right, for the superintendent goals and district improvement plan year to date update.
Those are two really tough acts to follow. I was enjoying, I mean, I, you know, I get a front row seat every day with their work and the work of all of their teachers, the work of all their paraprofessionals and and other building staff. But it's, it's, it's such a joy to hear to hear how all of that comes up to this level with the school committee. So thank you, Noel, and Nolan's already back out helping the community with with track and field. So thank you to Nolan, too. So what we have here tonight is really a high level summary. Within your packet, you have all the superintendent's goal oriented evidence and historical documents. You have plenty of references to presentations that have been given and documents that have been provided over the last few months with the district improvement plan. We had given an update in November in in detail. That was a lengthy presentation. And and here tonight, I really just added kind of little, little bits. And I will point out areas where there will be deeper dives into information as we get through the next couple of months, too. But I'm going to share my screen to provide the whirlwind overview so that then we can take that out into discussion. So first, taking the district improvement plan. And this is another chance to highlight. I am reporting this work, but it truly is the work of of a really dedicated and broad team across the district across multi year goals. So we just approved this district improvement plan, improvement plan in January of twenty twenty four, I believe, and it carries through through the end of the school year ending in twenty twenty seven. So snippets that are in more depth within your packet, all of our curriculum improvement efforts are on track. Our elementary and middle school math adoption is happening. I ready was selected. We had given you a glimpse of it back in January. We are now headlong into the professional learning, headlong into making sure that every plan for helping our educators with with adoption fully are underway. Pre K through twelve literacy instruction. Again, we gave a an in depth presentation back in February. It's focused, this plan is focused on assessment, use of the data coming out of assessments. The professional learning that is needed for staff to be able to best use that data, translate it into customized instruction for our students, both in tier one, so in general ed classrooms, as well as as we look at the work of reading specialists and special education staff. And then a focus on reintroducing a reading specialist position into the middle school. Noel, just just walk you through that better than I ever could. Adoption of state wellness and PE standards. This is an area where the state has been committing work for the last bunch of years. And then school districts have been have been using that this year to prepare for. We'll be rolling that out within our middle school this coming year. And we will continue to work on how to roll that out at at lower, younger levels as we as we move ahead past next year. Artificial intelligence, policies and procedures, and our digital wellness initiatives. Within AI, it's moving faster than I think any of us possibly can. But we've had a wonderful team across the district, across all three buildings, spanning all kinds of technical areas, working on trying to make sense of what should we be teaching? How should we be encouraging use? How should we be setting policies? And we will be bringing a draft policy through the policy subcommittee very soon within the area of artificial intelligence, and specifically, a lot of work on generative AI. So what are the tools that help you write, improve your writing, do research, be able to be able to just be more responsive to the world with all the flood of information that exists within it? Digital wellness, a lot of work happening within the world of understanding what what mobile phones, what social media means to our students, how it's impacting them. There have been a series of wonderful nights at our elementary schools and work going on within our middle high school. Very well attended at our elementary schools, I should note. That that has long been a hard nut to crack. Ellie Cotts, Director of Academic Technology, planned a series that was that was really stellar. And coming out of that, we've seen a lot of support from our families in the district sponsoring more work around wait until eighth. The National Campaign to try to encourage people to wait until at least eighth grade to have their their student utilizing a cell phone. So a lot of progress in all of those areas. Our curriculum and materials review for bias, that is continuing. This is our first year of a really highly structured process. A lot of our PD time for staff has gone into doing that self review, making sure they pick up and inspect artifacts around their classroom and all the content that they teach. This is an area where we will definitely be reporting out more in the coming months. Chronic absenteeism. Nolan stole the thunder a touch. We've seen a lot of success through personal outreach and attention to every student and family. I think Lanesboro Elementary School has been has been up here in that regard. We just to give you a little snippet, this is another area that we'll be touching upon more in the coming months. Our district wide chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent or more of a school year, so eighteen or more school days out of one hundred and eighty. That is a state level definition. Last year, that number district wide was fifteen percent of our students. This year, we think we're going to come in below ten percent, which is a massive improvement. And Lanesboro Elementary School has has been been, I think, the the most stellar of our of our schools in that regard. So we're going to be giving you more information in the coming months on that work. And we will also break it down into student subgroups and so on. So we're going to make sure to touch upon all of that with you. Our communications improvement work. This is an area that's very much a work in progress. And there isn't a lot of wonderful, visible progress yet, in that we have been working on how to redesign our website, how to ensure that information is up to date, how to make sure that we reorganize the way that people navigate so that they have the information that they need, so that when they wonder, how do I? The answers are at their fingertips. And that's that's largely the work of integrating the website, parent square, and so on. So there's a lot of groundwork that's been laid. I think this summer we'll see a lot of that come to fruition, and we'll actually be able to start presenting different changes that are that are happening. Similarly, we're also working on trying to better involve the community in cultural awareness, celebration and educational efforts. This is something that for a long time, quite honestly, has has stumped me as as to how to how to get the community interested, excited, involved in ways that we can utilize, in ways where we can actually say, thank you for all of that energy. Here's a way to translate it into things happening within our school buildings. We have some ideas around cultural awareness and celebration committees and groups and being able to bring parents in, community members, other resources within our local colleges and so on. That's something where I think, again, we're going to see expanded work here over the next couple of months. It's taken a little while to try to build, build a sense of how to go about that longer than I'd wanted. So I take full blame, and I will not be able to take full credit when when things do blossom, because it's going to take the work of an entire community really to to cover a lot of ground. So that's the district improvement plan. Again, there's there's underlying information within your packet, kind of seeding things. There are plenty of areas that in the coming months we'll be talking about. I'll just stop here for a moment, I think, see if there are any immediate questions, and then we can turn to the superintendent goals side of things.
One quick question, Joe. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, perfectly.
For the discussion about AI, how much of this is going to be in the middle high school? And how much of it is going to go down all the way to the elementary schools?
The vast majority of the vast majority will be within the middle high school, partly because it's it's the middle high school students who are already, whether we condone it or not, whether it is consistent or not, whether it is, it is structured in in productive ways or not, utilizing AI tools at the elementary school level, because there is a whole lot less time with with the Chromebook, a whole lot less time with the screen while they're in school. There are fewer ways, there are a whole lot fewer assignments where you're writing something outside of school and then bringing it in and so on. More of the, more of the content, more of the attention certainly is in the middle high school, but the team that's been looking at policies, the teams have been, that's been looking at ways to consider it is a pre K through twelve teaching and administrative and student group that that has been at this for the last bunch of months. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just want to make sure that, you know, things are constantly going to be changing, that we are thinking about what's the right way, what's the right time to bring this down into the elementary schools.
Yes, I mean, just a little highlight, I think the every, every group effort has acknowledged that this is not something that where we just lock the doors and try to act like it doesn't exist. We are very much aware of its current impact, aware that that will evolve very quickly, and trying to figure out how to educate, how to embrace, how to, how to, how to look at the problem and look at the opportunity in ways that that really considers it as a part of life similar to the way people thought of the internet as as brand new and and different twenty, thirty years ago. Okay. So turning to superintendent goals. You have my self evaluation. You have the compilation of of information. Tonight is thankfully not about you evaluating me. It's more about me making sure that you have the information so that over the course of the next month, you all can do your work. And then next month will be the moment where where that comes. So really, this is like an information item as opposed to a super heavy discussion item here, I think, tonight. I had four, I had four goal areas, literacy instruction improvement. We already talked about that in a in a number of ways tonight, so I won't, I won't touch upon that anymore here. Improvement of two way communication between the district and our student, staff and community. Part of that, website, parent square expansion, making it current, I did talk about within the district improvement plan. I did not talk about the work that we're doing within check ins and surveys. So ways to utilize tools to bring data in from our, from our students, from our staff, from our families, such that such that we can understand how we're doing, how to evolve, how individuals are doing, and what kinds of supports we can offer them. The survey tool that we have utilized sporadically for the last few years is Panorama. We are working actively right now with the Equity Imperative to try to improve the ways that we utilize Panorama. So we're taking a look at the ways that other districts utilize Panorama and looking at at the ways that you can offer the best question set to get at information that you would like to, interpreting it and actually putting it to use. That's work that we're going through right now with the team that that advisory group that was formed earlier this year. That's actually the point where we are right now with that group is starting to to turn our attention to that. So I think that we'll see more visible progress there early in the fall. By the time we're able to actually kind of roll out the work that we've been doing with them. Check ins, we have evaluated a few check in tools. Check ins are considered like smaller bite sized little surveys that you might offer up weekly or bi weekly with students, with families, with staff. We've looked at a few different options. We have not committed to one yet. I'm trying not to get paralyzed with the different options, the different costs, the different ways that people operate. But it's again, an area where I'm trying to keep outside experts in the Equity Imperative close and and really try to try to work with them before we make decisions, because it feels like a commitment in terms of how we're going to operate, what we're going to ask of our staff in terms of adopting and consistently using. So we're trying to make sure that we that we get it right the first time if possible and fully. Goal three, our work with the Equity Imperative to revise our incident response policies and procedures. We are on progress. We are on target on something for a fall twenty twenty five launch. We have been working through ways to think about tiered tiered behavior matrices, ways to think about different responses within different settings, whether it's a classroom setting, an administrative front office setting, or a district level setting. We've been thinking about what that means for then being able to write clearly what our expectations are, what what families should expect throughout processes, and so on. And then the workflow side of that, which is what do you ask somebody to do? What, how do you have them complete a form? How do you then make sure that they know that you have received that information and that you're working on it? How do they know that that there are a set number of milestones as you're going through that process? That's all work that we've been doing within our our advisory group. We are getting to the point where I think we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel as far as here. Here are the things that we need to do to be able to be ready for launching. And as we get there, that's when we start to roll out professional learning for our staff around, here's what to expect, here's what's new, here's how to go about various things. And so that's, that's an area where, again, progress, a lot of it internal, and and by the fall, we should, we should have have a really well structured, well explained, very, very actionable mode of operating when things do go wrong within the realm of incident response. And then my fourth favorite, hiring the next West principal. The process is complete. We actually were just able to send notification out to the Williamstown Elementary School community an hour ago. Benjamin Torres will be joining us from Holyoke Community Charter School, where he has spent the last fourteen years as a as a school leader, and and before that as a as a teacher. Truly amazing individual within an amazing pool of candidates. The the committee that we brought together, spanning staff, families, administrators. We had, we had tough work to do, really joyous, tough work because of the types of people, the different experiences, depth, breadth, all of it. It was a really enjoyable process and and coming out of it, I'm really excited for for Ben joining us here. He's, he's going to gradually, we're, we're starting the lineup moments where where he can hop into the school community prior to the end of school. And and he will fully be with us come July one. So looking forward to introducing you and and having him join us at Williamstown Elementary School. And I couldn't end that item without huge thanks to Griffin LeVance and Jen Downey, who in their interim roles this year have carried torches in ways that have been selfless, that have demonstrated a lot of growth, both individually, but but for the school. It's been, it's been really wonderful seeing them work, working alongside them. And thankfully, Griffin is returning to his assistant principal role after this school year. Jen is returning to a teaching role. So so we're keeping them close, and and we're all going to continue working together, adding to the team with Ben. So one and four up there on the screen are complete. Three has seen significant progress and two, some progress. So for me, that those are both areas that need improvement by the definition of the of the of the phrase and within the rubric. So my overall self evaluation is, my work, it shows progress. The the arc of that work, I I think, is is something that I feel very good about. That said, I think the the district needs all of us to to complete the work that that has started here and the goals that were set. And I look forward to doing that in the coming year and and adding adding some more items to that plate. So I am year in review. I am I'm all at once, exhausted, happy, and I see a lot of area for for improvement. So that that's how I'll, that's how I'll sum it up. So with that, I will leave it for the night. But if there is any, if there are any questions, we can either take them tonight, but also I will be available for school committee members as we move through the next month, too.
I have a question similar to the one that I posed to Nolan. Will there be an opportunity for the committee and therefore the community to hear about the incident response plan development, either as it's being rolled out in the fall or prior to that? Just so that everyone knows what has Just so that everyone knows what has come to fruition?
Yeah.
All this hard work, everybody?
Absolutely. Information will start being shared both with the public and with the school committee in draft form in June. That will then. Start to take shape in ways that, that are, that are public documents as we move through June, July, August. Training for staff as well as making sure that the school committee knows all of the details of, of what's happening and why. That will really, I think, come to a good head in August so that then when staff are returning late August, early September. There will be a lot of up-close work with. With, with how-tos, with artifacts, with, with all of the, all of the supporting information. That will also be reflected by that point on our website with all of the supporting documentation and. All of the things that we want to make sure everybody will have close at their fingertips.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Joe now?
I, I actually had a question about the district improvement plan, if it's okay. It's a, it's just a like, can you clarify a question? There, there's a section in the more detailed listing of what has been accomplished and what is still to come. The student support and social emotional wellness. There's a reference to therapeutic and therapeutic supervision needs. And that we're not really expecting to, to make progress on this for school year 26. And I'm just wondering if. Either you or Noel could elaborate on that? If it's something that's already been discussed and maybe it's just the terminology that I'm stuck on, then, you know?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. It's actually tied to, I, I had started to talk about how there might be an opportunity here over the next few months to. Refocus some elements of the district improvement plan saying we, we've really shifted pretty far away. That item was there originally as we were considering, we had a cohort of students who potentially would benefit from an in-district. Behavior-focused. Program. That at one point in time would, would have been considered as potentially a substantially separate program housed within Mount Greylock Regional School. For a variety of reasons, primarily for the way student need has evolved. That is not an area where, where the district has. Seen, seen that it's practical, realistic to, to be able to do a program like that or need to do a program like that. So we really turned away from, from that goal. But it's an area where I think over the next couple of months, it, it probably makes sense for, for me to provide a little bit more information as to why we're, we're thinking of retiring that. Within the district improvement plan, so it's not sitting there for the next couple of years potentially. That said, now that I've said it, we might come back to you in the fall and say, given student need, we, we want to look at this. But it's, but it's just not there right now.
Thank you.
So next steps on Joe's evaluation. You have, I, I'll send out instructions, but I'd like to follow the process Christina has used before. Where we each complete the same evaluation form that Joe has and I can collate them. And present back to the school committee to discuss. If you've got questions about particular content that you don't understand or you don't remember, you, you know, please. Do reach out to Joe. He has provided a lot of documents for us so that we can tap into those. But we will bring that back and discuss at our June meeting. Steve?
Leaving the truck, I might be in a dead zone for a few moments, so if I get kicked off, I'll be back in two, three minutes.
Great.
So sorry, Julia, just for clarification on that. Are we to do this work between the, this meeting and the June meeting?
Yes, I will send out an EPL with the instructions, but ideally come back to the June. I bring to the June meeting, the collated version of everybody's input. Yep. So the deadline will be well before, enough before the June meeting, so I can collate something to bring to the group. Any other questions? Thank you, Joe, for sharing all of that. And we'll move on to the finance subcommittee report.
Yes, and these are actually two, these are two items to. An appointment of district treasurer and assistant treasurer for the district. It is annual and then also the annual treasurer authorization to borrow, where that authorization to borrow is really. Borrowing with the expectation that revenue is coming from state or local sources. So that if there ever is just a cash flow gap, that the treasurer is authorized to say, I'll do short-term borrowing for some number of weeks. Until we receive the funds that we know that we, we will. So this is really just an area where the, the committee, I can certainly answer questions, but it's also okay to, to think of it as move the motion. And approve it. Or move each motion and approve them.
If we, oh, go ahead, Carrie.
I was just going to move to appoint the district treasurer, assistant treasurer. Well, the district treasurer, motion to appoint Donna Neri as district treasurer. And Rena Sharma as the assistant treasurer.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Christina. Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote, starting with Christina.
Conrey, I.
I will second, well, I'm in range.
Heard Conrey, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Bella, I.
And Bo and I. Excellent. Do we have somebody who wants to move the set, make the second motion?
So moved.
No one else, oh, go ahead.
Alright, so Curtis made the motion that's written here. Is that, is that right Curtis? Right. And does anyone want to second the motion to authorize the district treasurer and the assistant treasurer? Under the provisions of general laws, I'll just read it out loud for the listening public. Under the provisions of the general laws, chapter 71, section 16G, 70, yep. As amended by chapter 134 of the Act of 1972. With the approval of the chair of the school committee to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025. And to issue a note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the general law. Curtis has moved that.
I will second.
Thank you, Christina, Christina has seconded it. Joe, I, I just wonder how often, do we have to use this?
We have not utilized it in, in many years. That said. I think this is as good of a time as any to note this. As our reserve funds. Become smaller, it is more likely that we will be in a position where just cash flow-wise, we need to utilize it. And I, I have started to have conversations with Williamstown Town Hall. Our regional agreement has the town of Williamstown contributing its payments quarterly. Meanwhile, the town of Lanesboro contributes 10 payments over the course of the first 10 months of the year. That has been within our regional agreement for, I think, 60-something years. It's not something that we changed when we, when we amended the regional agreement coming up on 10 years ago or, or when it was amended for the building project. For the Mount Greylock building projects, but that's an area where more consistent funds coming in. Could be helpful and it might be something where over the course of this coming year, we work on proposing a, a very minor. Revision to the regional agreement that then would need to be approved by both towns during their town meeting. So it's something that Donna and Ari and I have been looking at. And, and I've been coordinating with town halls to start to say like, this is something where as we look ahead a year. It could be beneficial as, as the world changes a bit.
Perfect, thank you.
But it, I'm just wondering, would it make sense to look at the full agreement and see if there are any other things to tweak since we'd be asking for a vote anyway?
We, we certainly could.
I think that makes sense, I'm not sure what other folks think.
Seems like the right time to do it, if we were ever to do it. Any other, any other questions or thoughts around this motion before us? Hearing none? Let's do a roll call vote, starting with Constantine. We're going to go around that, you know?
Okay, Constantine, I.
Elfin, by an I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Bella, I.
Bo and I.
Conrey, I.
Great, thank you. That passes unanimously.
Sorry, so this idea of revisiting the regional agreement. I'm not sure if that is an administrative task or a school committee task. And I wouldn't want to put that on the administration when it really should be the committee doing the work. So I, we, we don't need to decide anything now, but maybe it's something to think about and, and look into.
At a minimum, it feels like a future agenda item for us to.
Yeah.
And then to decide how we do it.
Yep. And the regional agreement is up on the website, so you know, if you're, you want to look through it and see what's there.
Thank you. Anything else from the finance subcommittee report? Great.
We have a meeting scheduled.
And later we'll go over all the upcoming meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jose, let's go to policy and governance subcommittee.
Alright. We've got four policies that you have before you as discussion items. Two are revised, one is a policy that may be rescinded and one is a, a new policy. And I think before starting us off, Joe, could you just provide us with a brief? Overview or an introduction to why we have these four policies before us?
Sure, we've been working through policies this year in, in theme sets and the theme of this set is school nutrition. Lunch, breakfast and so on. And the, there are a few different things happening with these policies. One is just bringing them in line with the MASC recommendations that have come out over the last few years. That's, that's part one. Making sure that we're, that we're in line with state and federal laws and, and regulations that are, that are just out there. That's part one, part two. We have very thoroughly transitioned to universal free lunch. These policies reflect that. We are also making the transition in this coming school year to universally offering breakfast free to all students. And that is reflected here as well. So really, that's, that's where the language is, or that's where our practice is headed. And that's therefore where the policy should, should head as well. And then the third item is, we did find and, and make sure that we add, that we're adding a new policy around civil rights complaints. That, that might ever arise. Related to child nutrition programs. So that's, that's an additional policy that's really just strengthening our civil rights coordination within, within policy sets. I think that's the summary.
Thank you, Joe.
Can I just, can I ask about the funding source? I believe that Massachusetts has committed to universal free lunch. Have they all, has the state also committed to universal free breakfast on an ongoing basis?
The, the commit, the, yes, and. The commitments are only as strong as the annual budgeting process at the state level. For this coming year, we have now gotten to the point where the Senate, so we, we have the governor's budget, the House budget, and now the Senate budget. So we don't have a full, and, and within every one of those steps, yes. Lunch and breakfast have been incorporated as, as fully funded. That said, if the USDA funding were to disappear. That is another critical area for us, kind of separate from. The mandate and the state funding. Which could put us in, in a bind, so we're pretty closely monitoring both state and federal funding. And, and trying to make sure that it all lines up so that we have a school nutrition program that is able to. Operate in a way financially that ideally covers its costs. Through those, through those two sources of funding so that we are able to offer both programs at no cost.
Thank you, Joe, and thanks for your question, Carrie. In olden days, this, these items will be listed as first reads and I don't know if we actually need to read through them. And I'll, I'll look to Julia for this, but first up, going in, in order is policy. EFC, a revise, a revision to policy EFC on free and reduced price food services. Julia looks, yeah, I don't know if we need to read through this, but.
My inclination is they've been in the pack, there's. For those who may want it read, there's software available to read. I love hearing Curtis's voice, but my inclination is that's especially all taken together, a lot of time that. That would be my inclination.
Okay, thanks, Julia. Curtis, as you all might be aware of, is, is offered to upload these policies onto Audible. So for those who are looking forward to. So policy EFC, any questions or comments that you'd like to share with us? Just, just keep moving, so next is, is a. If EFC, the revision. Is approved eventually by our committee, the full committee. It may, well, EFC dash R on school food service. Would, we would need to vote on it, but the, much of what's embedded here would either. Not be pertinent or relevant or would be embedded in, in policy EFC, is that correct, Joe? Just to make sure I got that right?
Yes, all, all of it is covered in, in other areas.
Yeah. Any comments or feedback on? Potentially rescinding policy EFC dash R? Okay. Next is policy EFD, the meal charge policy.
Sorry. Before we go to that, could we go back?
Yeah.
EFC and just maybe about the need to, for families to fill out the free and reduced meals paperwork. Because it's not intuitive, I mean, it's honestly like, if we're providing meals, why should families need to do that? But it's really important for the district, I don't know, Joe, if you want to talk about why that is?
Yes, so. Trying to figure out how to explain it, so that there, there have been two kind of. Two, two reasons for this data existing in the world historically. Back before there was universal, state-funded, federally-funded lunch. There was a need for, for families to complete these forms in order to qualify for free or reduced lunch. Then when the state said, we are going to step in and, and make sure that, that all lunch is fully funded. Some of, some of that need went away, but those forms are still the gating factor for other forms of support. Within the district, for waiving of fees, for knowing that we. That, that we can and should provide financial assistance within a variety of areas. that, that we can and should provide financial assistance within a variety of areas. Simultaneous with that, the state also took some of that qualification responsibility back for itself in that it utilizes other programs happening around the state to identify families for us and then communicate that data to us. So we do have a way, separate from the form set, to know if a family might need financial assistance of any sort. But these forms are still a, a highly valuable way of self-identifying and making sure that there are no cracks within, within that system. So it's, it's no longer needed for lunch or breakfast, but it is valuable for many other forms of programming that we have. And I think that it, it's also something where I think many of us as school district leaders around the state are trying to figure out how do we get this more front and center and really highlight all of the other areas that used to be considered distant seconds to making sure that food insecurity could be addressed. And, and now we really need to transition away from that to all of the other things. And it's, it's something that, again, is work around communication and, and being responsive with families that we need to do. So thank you for bringing that up.
Joe, quick question on that. You kind of touched on this, but just to clarify, I think that there are maybe some ways that students auto-qualify for free lunch, like being on Mass Health, right? So if you fall into that category, does the school know who those people are? Or is it still important for people to fill out the form? Do you know what I mean?
Yep, that, that is.
Or do you have that information?
So, so the state does transmit that information to us, so we do have it. But really, in practice, it, it would be, it would be ideal if we just made sure that any family that, that, that could, that might qualify, completed the form so that we made sure that if there was an omission of data from the state, or, or if there was a change in programs, change in households in ways that could confuse the data that we receive, that we're receiving it directly from families too.
So Joe, is this a state form? Is it a form that gets submitted to the state? Or is it, and, or could it be an internal form?
We can customize the form. We can, for instance, and, and this is something that we're looking into, creating web and, and parent square based versions of, of many forms. We can definitely do that. We then just need to make sure that we get all of the needed fields so that we can transmit them to the, to the correct places so that then the checks, the balances happen.
And I also wonder if we can call it something else? You know, call it something that, that folks may be more responsive to or may indicate more clearly the need for, for actually filling it in.
It's a great, yes. Short answer is yes.
Yeah, because isn't the forms called free and reduced lunch, and people might not recognize that? I don't need to do that anymore, to your point, Carrie, right?
Thank you, Carrie, for that, that question, and thanks, Joe. Any other comments or, or feedback on, on EFC while we're, we're on it again? So we've gone from EFC, EFC dash R, and then next up is EFD, the meal charge policy. Comments or feedback that you'd like to share?
Two quick questions. One is, I don't remember our committee approving fee, rate, fees for meals. I have a bad memory, but it's noted in here that we approve the meal rates?
As, as, right now, there is no, there has been no change to that rate. Well, for the vast majority of students who are taking a, a single lunch.
Right, they don't pay anything.
They don't pay anything, and, but, but the other kind of the, the rate for if you want to purchase a second, that has not changed in the last five, six years or more. But, but it used to, it, if we were to change that figure, it, it would come before the school committee. The school committee would say, we're going to raise it from $2 and X to $2 and Y, that kind of.
Okay. The other thing I, which I'm glad to see in here, but I is delinquent accounts? Like, just how do we manage delinquent accounts? And I know that schools have struggled with this in various ways. And so I didn't know, I don't see anything in here that says, because I don't actually think it's legal. You don't get your diploma, you don't get your report card or whatever. But like, what, what, is that an issue? Is that a challenge for the district? And if so, how are we? Should the, do we as a school committee need to discuss that for what we would do or what we would expect to have done?
Once again, because of, because of the universal free lunch, it, it is, it is not an issue. And as it is not an issue, the, when students move to purchase, say, snacks at Mount Greylock separate, we are not required to, we, we notify students when their balance is, is, is low, or we notify families via email when their balance is low. And we, I believe we do not allow those accounts to go into the negative because that is not a part of being able to receive lunch. So that is not an issue for us in the present time.
Thanks, Julia. Any other comments or feedback on, on this policy? Okay, and then last stop is policy EFE, a new policy, civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition program. You'll see here that some text is highlighted in red. And Joe, can you just remind us what the red text is, is meant to prompt?
Yes, part of our communications update, to make sure that information is always up to date and friendly. Anything that's read here will actually be a hyperlink in the final, within the policy manual going to a consistent URL at our website so that you've got all the information and how to contact the person with that, with that role within the district.
Thanks, Joe. Yep, the feedback comments on this new policy, Steve?
Yeah, I just had one quick question about it. It says, any person alleging discrimination in the district's school, food, and nutrition policy based on race, color, national origin, age, sex, or disability, you know, dot, 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 has the right to file a complaint. Is there any reason why we're enumerating which people have a right to file a complaint? Or is it because that this goes through a specific organization, and this organization only deals with complaints based on these categories? If, for instance, is there, if somebody has a religious complaint? Does that not go through this organization?
That is a good question. I'm trying to figure, I mean, it's, this, this language is coming straight from the MASC, and that came from the federal and state government levels. I think that's something that we can take back to the policy subcommittee, Jose.
I mean, it, it, it might be that the federal legislation only deals with discrimination on the basis of these categories.
Yeah, what we'll do, Stephen, as a, a great question, is that we'll probably follow up with our own counsel.
Right.
Some feedback on this, and then with the expectation that this will, this policy will be an action item at that moment of the next, you know, full committee meeting where this reappears. We'll have an answer to your question then.
So I know I should do a George Costanza and quit while I'm ahead, but I'll make a second comment. It also says that, you know, such a person has the right to file a complaint. It doesn't say no one else has a right to file a complaint. Just interesting phrasing.
I would, that, a great point. A, a great point.
And so if, you know, again, this is me trying to be a mathematician. Does this mean only people can file complaints on these bases? Or these people were explicitly saying you can file a complaint, but other people were leaving it up in the air? So I, I, I would just ask for some clarification so that if anybody has an issue, we're as open as possible to helping people.
Got you, yeah. So we will, I think, get feedback for ourselves as a district and then as a subcommittee, look into whether or how the language could, or, or language could be added to clarify our care and support for, you know, all, all students in our district.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or feedback on this policy? Okay. Stephen, your hand is up, but I think, I think it's just.
Oh, yep.
No worries, yeah. You will see a policy listed as an information item, a policy IKF on graduation requirements. You can expect this particular policy to, to show up as a discussion item at a subsequent school committee meeting. And I think that's it from us, Julia.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, committee. I feel like you've had a really heavy year of policies, so I appreciate these coming, coming before us.
Can I?
I, Steve, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask a question about the graduation requirements.
So that's.
This is not the, this is just information, okay?
It's just an information item. Right.
Okay.
So, so write it down or send it to the policy committee for, at the next meeting.
Yep.
Great. So the next item is scheduling of our 2025 school committee retreat. I think you all received a poll from Joe that was not a doodle, but a different poll. And I think there was a day we all could do. Is that right, Joe? As he's coming up with that. I wanted to thank you for responding to the poll. I don't think we'd actually talked about making sure we got a retreat onto our calendar. But in all the work that's been happening, I'm realizing it would be good for us to kind of have a chance as a committee to kind of look back, look ahead. And importantly, spend some time saying, are we organized the way that we should and want to be? Are to be most effective and efficient and thoughtful? And then looking at, ahead at some of our, especially as we look ahead at some of the work that we have coming up, like the superintendent search, or like any support that's needed for the variety of district improvement goals. So I, I, so I think we had landed on a, the date I think I saw was a midweek in June, maybe the first week of June, five to nine time slots for us to get together. My hope is we could maybe have a meal together, enjoy each other, and have some kind of open conversation to make sure we're working as efficiently and effectively as possible.
Quick question. I don't have the poll in front of me, and I don't remember what I said yes or no to. But when you just said the first week in June, it occurred to me that that's like all the senior activities on many of those nights. So I just wanted to make sure that we de-conflict, or if it was just me, then that's fine. But, um, I just wrote like five things on the calendar in that one week, so.
The winner was actually June 24th.
Oh, so it's not the first week.
Yours will be long gone, sorry.
After all, I mean, even, even for.
No problem.
With rising seventh graders and everything, it's after school has ended, after all of those.
When you said first week in June, I panicked because I just recognized that it's very busy.
I probably have another date in my mind. I've got something else going on that week. Looks like the last, the, the last week in June is when we're, when we can all get together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tuesday, Tuesday, June 24th at 5:00 PM, and, and I'll actually send an email out just noting that shortly.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Carrie, the MASC Division VI report?
So I was in Boston on my evening for the MASC board meeting and a strategic planning session with the MSC, MASC board and staff. So we're working to kind of redefine the mission, or perhaps just tweak the mission of the organization and talk about how to make it more effective and responsive to the folks that the board and the organization work with across the state. So that has been a good process. One thing I learned in the meeting is that the summer retreat, which usually happens in Marlboro, Mass, is they're thinking about moving it west. And by west, they mean Springfield, but still, you know, it's, it's something, right? That one of the board members was talking about, and the beautiful Berkshire is down the road. And I'm like, really? You, you can't say that. But the heart, their heart is in the right place, and they like this idea of, you know, because the conference has been on the Cape to make the Summer Institute something that is really attractive to school committee members, not just in terms of the, the topics, but also perhaps for a long weekend with family and encouraging more members, especially those who cannot attend the conference, to attend the retreat. So keep your eyes out. I'm not sure what's going to happen for this summer, but, but that was talked about as the plan. Day on the Hill, we heard from the education chairs and coach, and vice chairs in both the House and the Senate. And interestingly and pleasantly enough, they were echoing some of the priorities of the key legislative priorities that the MASC was also putting forward. So the priorities that MASC identified as ones that folks could and should advocate for and lobby for were adjusting Chapter 78 for past and future inflation, improving the fiscal health of rural school districts, expanding capacity in vocational technical schools, establishing and funding financial literacy programs, and supporting school committees in the superintendent's search process. So that last one is particularly relevant for us, and the goal there is to allow all members of the school committee to participate in the earlier, the earlier phases of the search process without being a violation of open meeting law, violation of executive session, or a violation of privacy for the folks who are applying and maybe haven't notifying their, notified their districts that they're applying. So it's, it's before the legislature, and, you know, it's been clear. We've tried to make it clear that this is really essential. And so whether anything is able, you know, is, is changes in time for us, we don't know. But it's worth keeping an eye on again. The Division VI and Division VII are thinking about collaborating on a an event, an MASC-sponsored event that would be looking at child and teen anxiety, looking at perhaps involving the Jonathan Haidt book, The Anxious Generation, but perhaps instead doing a screening of, oh, goodness, I'm blanking on the, the name of the film, the one that introduces anxiety, the two, part two. You guys know what I'm talking about.
Inside Out 2.
Thank you, Inside Out 2. And making it something that parents and kids could also participate in, in terms of the discussion. And it relates to the Wait Till Eight movement and seems to tie into some of the things that our district is also trying to do. And then finally, a couple of us, actually Division VII, which is on the Cape, and Division VI chairs, myself, are interested in attending the Rural Schools Conference this year. There are a number of members of the MASC board that attend CUBE, which is the urban districts. And so we're like, hey, rural districts, you know, because those sessions, as I think I relayed, were particularly valuable at the NSBA meeting. So it looks like we will be putting in for M. So it looks like we will be putting in for MASC sponsor sponsorship to attend the Rural Schools Conference, which I think is in September. Yeah, so that's it.
Thank you for that report and thank you for that work, Carrie. That's a lot of important legislative and and a policy work that benefits us all. So thank you. Um, next, we have a proposed resolution for MASC. And it says from Steve here, but I think Curtis may have helped draft this as well.
Yes.
Okay. Turning it over to you guys.
Okay. Do you want me to read it? Do you want Curtis to read it? Because he's a better reader. Should we just discuss it?
Uh, I'm happy to read it and then see what happens next.
I think it would be to read because it is a motion.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Proposed resolution for MASC from Steve Miller. Whereas it is the responsibility of the elected representatives to judiciously allocate the funds entrusted to them. And whereas it is not sustainable long-term to consistently spend more than is collected. And whereas it is better to spend money providing services than servicing debt. And whereas the slower the response to exponentially increasing debt and deficits, the more damage will be done and the more drastic the needed remedies will be. Therefore, be it resolved that all the school districts in the Commonwealth urge their elected representatives to immediately move to sustainable budgets over the next three years. Such a timeframe is long enough to allow phased in reductions or other changes in administrative structuring, staffing and non-mandated curricula and/or programs, and to give communities and organizations time to plan and adjust.
So I, that's the motion. I guess the motion is on the table to approve that, to send that resolution to the MASC.
Correct. For, for this to be one of the resolutions that they discuss.
And then do, can we have a second before we move into discussion of the motion?
Who, who made the first motion?
I think you made the first motion.
It hasn't been moved yet.
I'll, I'll move it.
Okay.
And I'll second it there.
Right.
Thank you.
And now we can discuss.
I have. Oh, go ahead, Julia.
Um, I have two. I may have more questions, but the two that come to mind, one is uh, what does sustainable budgets mean? I, that's in the therefore be it resolved. And the second, I'll just share both of my. Except that I just lost my second. Oh. What is the gap that needs to be fixed in the state budget?
I mean, right now, I think the state debt is on the order of the state revenue per given year. And so, you know, the state right now already has a tremendous debt. We're spending money on interest payments. And so for me, you know, sustainable, this is definitely not sustainable. In terms of an exact definition, I would probably say what we do is don't spend more than you have. If an absolute emergency comes up, this is why you hopefully have a rainy day fund, which we have established in our district. So when things come up, we have the resources to handle that. And so right now we have to make painful decisions. If we don't make them, other people are going to. You know, this, you know, this can't continue. And so rather than having other people make the decisions, I would rather have us make the decisions and really look at what we're spending money on and determine what needs to be prioritized.
So I'm not clear. Are you talking about the state budget or the school committee budgets across?
I am talking about the state budget. Is that?
The state budget.
Is that the MASC should be advocating that the elected representatives be fiscally responsible. And the longer we wait to put in such an ask, the more painful it's going to be to get to a good spot.
I mean, it seems to me that what we want to lobby for is that more funds go to education. Right? And I mean, that would be more relevant to school committees. And I, I did, I did hear some conversation from, not conversation, some statements from the various legislators at the, on Tuesday in Boston about, you know, the overage or the, the finding money, right? More money to go toward education and finding ways to make funding, you know, more effective for schools and things like raising. By the way, this is an aside, but I learned that there is a provision for establishing a special education uh, reserve fund. We've never had one. It's at, I can't think capped at 2%, but there is an effort to raise it to 5%, right? Which would be similar to E and D, right? So school committees could put aside funds, you know, so a lot of the conversation was about how to make more funding available, both to towns school districts to support schools. And I think that's what we are more interested in, rather than telling legislators to just be more efficient with their own budgets. That's just my two cents.
Well, unfortunately, the legislature is not only spending your two cents, they're spending a lot of other people's two cents as well, more cents than they have. And while this may not be my first choice of activities to do, someone has to step up. And the trend is getting worse and the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be, the more painful it's going to be. We are just asking them to be responsible in expenditures. We are not allowed to spend significantly more money than we bring in. And we make painful choices. And so we do not have unlimited resources. We are just asking them to really think about all the different programs you have. Which ones do you want to prioritize? And so I, I don't really think that this is a huge ask. And given the financial difficulties, not just us, but other towns are having, this is a conversation that I think is appropriate to have. Also, based on a previous conversation, we're not enumerating items that we think should be prioritized over others. We are leaving that to our legislature. And just saying that you need to be thinking about this. You know, as Curtis read, I would much rather be spending the money on services than on interest payments.
Yeah, it just seems more appropriate to send that to your representatives as a citizen than through the school committee or the state resolution.
I, I just do because, because we're talking about, we need to find money. We're talking about, we need resources for education.
Right, but that is not what stipulated in the resolution. The resolution is not focusing on providing more resources for education. So I, I just think it has a focus that isn't relevant necessarily. I mean, you, I understand your argument for why it's always relevant and I don't disagree with all of it, but I think the way it's worded is not helpful. Or.
I would be happy to add a sentence where we explicitly add education as a service to the citizens of the Commonwealth that is suffering because of this.
I, I think, um, I take Carrie's point because honestly, I think education is a big portion of the budget. And if we're going to move to sustainable budgets, I think we may see cuts. So if we don't stipulate, you know, we could be actually urging our representatives to do something that will hurt us as, as a school committee. So to Carrie's point, this coming from citizen, I mean, we as a school committee should not be asking other school committees to urge the state to get balanced budgets that will likely mean they have to cut money to us as a school committee or as a, as a district. So it is an important point. But unless this is like, because we want more education funding, I think we're actually as a school committee, potentially, I don't want to say digging your own grave, but like creating problems for ourselves.
Right. And I, and, and as I said, I think there are other ways to advocate for education funding that other, yeah, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Julia.
I, I, I'm happy to add a sentence or two to add a point about prioritizing education. That this is one of the services the Commonwealth needs to do. We are spending a lot of money on things we do not need to do that we want to do. And I'm happy to add some sentences along those lines and highlight the value of education to the Commonwealth. But the longer we wait, the worse it's going to be. And the longer we wait, the more likely it is that other people are going to choose what cuts to make. And we're seeing that right now on the national scene. And so I would much rather be part of the conversation now and try to help make targeted cuts and help attain fiscal responsibility than to continue this path that we're on. This is not a sustainable path. And you think we're spending a lot of money on interest now, you see how much healthcare is going up. We're fortunate that we have resources in our community to help us with these budgets. We have a lot of volunteers. A lot of districts are not in such a fortunate situation. And so the longer, I'm just repeating myself, so. I, I really think that we need to show some leadership here and we need to step up and try to get other people to join us before it's too late.
Would it be safe to say that at this point, uh, the, the sentiment from those who have spoken about what they've heard is that they need a revision that points the focus toward effective and fiscally responsible safeguarding of education as the priority? And that we need to put, make that be a thrust of this statement. But, but also maintaining the, the integrity of the point of the urgency of fiscally responsible planning that keeps that education as a priority in our state. And so we would go back to a revision and then bring it back to the committee, potentially at the next, at the, what month is it made? The June meeting. I had to literally look to see what month it was just now. That happened.
When, when are the resolutions due though?
You might know that best, Carrie.
Yeah.
Hang on one second, because I think the resolutions committee is meeting in June. Let me see if I can do a quick search. Well, I may have to get back to you on this.
I got June 2nd, I think. MASC 2025 Resolution Form nominations must be received by June 2nd.
And our next meeting is June 12th.
Yeah, so maybe.
I didn't realize that submission deadline was so soon.
But can, can the resolutions be modified by the MASC before they go out?
I, I don't know if they're modified by the MASC. I think they can be modified on the floor. I mean, they, they would be voted by the resolutions committee, yes or no, to include. And then they would have to be modified on the floor if, if they were included. I don't think that this resolution as it stands is likely to be included, but I'm, I'm not on that committee, so I don't, you know, I couldn't really speak for them.
What if we just add in the opening sentence? It was like, whereas it is the responsibility of elected representatives to responsibly allocate the funds entrusted to them, comma, in particular for education.
Personally, I don't necessarily think it is the responsibility. I, I think that's a stretch, but I think whereas education needs more funds, could, if there were another whereas.
I would be fine with any language along those lines, you know. Whereas the, your current demands and education require additional funding. I mean, the, the Saudi, the, the truth is, this is essentially just a symbolic action. The state legislature, I am not optimistic is going to become responsible. But I feel like we have to try.
I would, I, I don't feel like I can support this resolution. And I, I would rather see you send, you know, this message directly to your legislators as an individual. You know, not in resolution form, but as a strongly worded statement.
I don't think that has as much impact as something coming from the school committee and something coming from the association of school committees. That what, what we have is not sustainable. We're talking about the dangers we have in the budgets now. It's going to get worse.
I don't, I don't think anyone disagrees with you on that point. I think it's a strategy of how to get, how to think about it, how to, how to get other people to think about it. And a, and a questioning of what is the, whose, whose role is it? Who, and who does the message need to get to? So I hear, I, I, I guess one, one of the things I don't think about is Carrie says that is I wouldn't want us to spend 10 minutes reworking this proposal that the school committee won't. If the school committee currently isn't even in a position to say they would support this proposal, even if it were fixed. Um, I'd rather. I don't, I mean, I don't know in par, I have my little note card on parliamentary procedures. I don't know how that works.
I mean, do you want to do a straw poll?
Can we do a straw poll within it?
Well, there's a motion. There's a motion on the table and what we should do is vote the motion or the motion should be withdrawn.
Well, can we have? I don't want to withdraw the motion, but I mean, in the discussion, can, can people just say if in principle, they would potentially support, I mean, this is so indefinite.
Yeah, why don't we just vote? Why don't we just vote on the motion?
Yeah, I, I think it's too indefinite otherwise. So are you calling the question, Carrie?
Yeah, I'm calling the question. Thank you. I think we have to vote to call the question now.
Hey, do we have a second to, do we have to have a second to call the question?
What does call the question mean? Just take the vote?
To go to a vote.
Second.
Okay. Can we do a roll call vote to call the question? And just for fun, we're now going to start with Curtis.
When are we going to go by height? Or are we doing that now?
I have to always go alphabetical order so you know who you follow, but we're starting with Curtis.
Elfenbein I.
Green I. Malloy I.
Miller Epstein.
Bowen, I. Conrey. Calling the question.
Christina, are you there?
Christina, I know she's been having some internet issues.
Oh.
Really weird. Are you there, Christina?
We can't hear you. So.
But I think we have enough votes that it passes.
Well, let's go to Constantine.
Constantine I.
Okay, so we've called the question. Now we're voting on the motion. I, before us to send this proposed resolution to the MASC. After Elfenbein comes green. Green.
Green nay. Malloy nay.
Miller I.
Bowen nay.
Conrey nay, if you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Wow.
Constantine abstain.
Elfenbein I.
So I think that's. So I think that's the nays have it.
Is it possible to now consider a modified motion?
Um, I think so. I'm not great with Robert's Rules of Order. That is not on my little card. But I look to other parliamentarians on the committee who may have more experience.
Well, what was on the agenda was, um, let me just look up the agenda. Proposed resolution and we already voted. So I would say another motion should come to another meeting.
Um, okay, so why don't we do this, um, following that procedure, um, but also recognizing the deadline? And understanding the work that Steve and Curtis have put into this. Could we look for a brief window for a short school committee meeting, a one item agenda between now and June 2nd?
I think that would be great.
I know nobody has time, um, but I want, I appreciate the work that's gone into this and I want to honor that. But I also want to try to follow appropriate procedures and open meeting law, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, that would be my suggestion. And, um, I will work with Joe to send out a quick doodle poll. Carrie, go ahead.
I was just going to say that there are other meetings scheduled. So maybe we could tack on to one of the future meetings and have a 10 minute, you know, rather than scheduling another date.
I love it. I love it. Why don't we move to that part of the agenda and discuss? Not the scheduling of that second meeting, but at least the upcoming meetings.
And maybe people could say if they're free at those meetings.
Maybe people
Yeah, I mean, I would offer, since this is a finance based, um, motion, I would offer that the Finance Committee could put it. Well, we can't put it on our agenda, but I would be willing to, because then you can't get the vote of the full
Of everybody. Um, that is also the day of the town meeting.
Town meeting.
Um,
Okay.
Which may be a challenge. That's the only one, unless unless people could come earlier than five.
Yeah, I can come earlier than five.
I could come, uh, what day of the week is that? Thursday?
Thursday, the 22nd.
And it's remote. I could do that.
What? So what do you mean by come earlier? This this would just precede the finance meeting?
Yeah.
Like 4:45 or 4:30? What kind of time are we talking about?
4:45 should be fine.
I I would think 4:45, yeah. Joe, you have a real question on your face.
Uh, I I just, I I I I have a meeting where I'm trying to figure out when when it will end, whether it will end in time for 4:45 or not. Sorry.
If or when?
But Joe, you wouldn't need to be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just a one motion.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Jose, would you be able to do that? Yeah.
I I believe I can as well. So that's 4:30, uh, May 20.
I think even 4:45 is what we're saying.
4:45, right, sorry.
Okay, so we at least have a quorum. You can come at 4:45 on Thursday, May 22nd for a one item school committee agenda to discuss a revised and potentially, and vote on a revised resolution.
And then if somebody cannot make the meeting, can they send their comments to you, Julia, so that they could be represented?
Yeah.
But there would be a revised, um, document to comment on.
Exactly.
And it needs to, the revised version needs to be in in time to be in the packet for that meeting for public access.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Okay. Um, thank you for that work. Thank you for that attention to obviously a critical detail about financial viability. I I at least speak for myself and say, um, while I do have questions about what the right method is, I appreciate the message. Um, and so, uh, deeply, um, I'm grateful for that work. So thank you, Curtis and Steve. Other upcoming meetings, we've just discussed Finance Subcommittee, followed by the Williamstown Annual Town Meeting. Um, I hope all from Williamstown will be able to be there. Um, and I obviously get your district supporters out, um, at that meeting as well, so we are sure to pass our budget. Lanesboro Annual Town Meeting is Tuesday, June 10th at 6:00 P M. I I hope all Lanesboro folks can be there and get all your district supporting friends out to support the budget. Um, Policy Subcommittee will be Thursday, June 5th at 5:00 P M, remote. And our next school committee meeting is Thursday, June 12th at 6:00 P M, remote. I do not have any other items that were not, that I do not anticipate, um, before, 48 hours before this meeting. I, agenda requests, a few have come up through this, the course of our discussion. Um, I have written down a student report on Cape Cod, um, a report out on the incident report work, which sounds like those are both already in motion to do. Um, we obviously have the agenda requests that will be a one item agenda. Were there other agenda requests that people have? Okay, then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Carrie.
Curtis, where were you?
Updating my schedule with the meetings. I just couldn't, too many
Get there fast enough. Okay, we got a motion from Carrie, second from Curtis.
Oh.
I think Steve seconded.
Oh, you did.
Curtis was too slow.
Yeah, I'm in here, Steve. All right, sorry, Curtis.
That's right, I could be a scorer for the Celtics.
Let's do
I almost made that joke.
Starting with green, roll call vote.
Green I. Malloy I.
Miller I.
Bowen I.
Henry I.
Constantine I.
Elfenbein I I.
Carrie, you got to close this out there.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Joe.